This thing went.
Mark, where's your son?
He's not muted.
Councilmember Remley? He's on the screen, just not, can't hear him. Ronain?
Here.
Lunsman?
Here.
Rife?
If I may, Josh.
Johnson?
Excuse me, if I could, Carl, Rife texted me and said he thinks that everybody is muted to me. And I don't know how I can be in charge of this, except I've got this computer sitting here.
Sean is available.
Josh, can you hear us?
Here, let me.
Yeah, we cannot hear.
Yep, I've got everybody muted.
He's not muted. Um, the software, is your computer microphone muted? No. Okay, we'll just go by head nods and shakes, okay?
This is when flashcards would be great, presents.
Well, I see he's present. Um, Johnson?
Here.
Bunsnus? Olson? Rux?
Here.
Mayor Shoneman?
Here.
Please stand before me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing we'll do is approve last week's minutes for the city council meeting in April 20th. Can I get a motion to approve last week's?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rux, since everyone is on television screens and not in person. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Carl? Councilmember Remley? Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife? Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsnus? Olson? Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye. Motion does carry. Minutes are recorded. Next, we've got open forum. We've got two contributors who are joining us via Zoom. Um, and is the audio working in any capacity with the people on the screen? It shows that it is, but it doesn't appear to be. Mr. Forkel, can you say something and see if we're coming across?
Nope.
Okay, we don't hear you. Hold on for just a minute. We've got a tech guy in-house here. This. Alme. How were you recording those votes before? Were they making some sort of an indication, Carl? Or they just didn't have votes?
Mouth reading. He asked how you're recording those votes.
Yeah. So if we moved ahead to the consent calendar, circle back around to open forum, for the sake of time, would it be all right to get those votes? I can't hear you.
He's working. Uh, he asked if we moved to the consent calendar, can we still record their votes?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. While we're waiting for, uh, the audio to be functional on the screen here, we'll move to the consent calendar. We'll dial back around to the open forum. We've got four items on consent calendar, possible approval. I trust that you guys have all seen them by now. Can I get a motion to pass our four routine city business items?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Rux and a second from Johnson. Carl, give me a roll call vote for the consent calendar. Councilmember Remley? Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife? Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsnus? Olson? Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye. Motion does carry. I'm hearing people on the screen now. They're just awfully quiet. Fading with echo.
It's on his computer. I'm not hearing it out here. I'm hearing it on there.
Carl, when, when the city first got computers, is this about how it went? Well, I was back with the stone tablets, so.
I'm not seeing there's anything wrong with the setting.
Or I could use that one to put it by my speaker. Is it connected into the audio system or how do we?
Yeah, no, it's, it's fed into the system.
That ain't gonna work.
No, that won't work that way. Let's see if I, if I were to unplug that there.
Is there a way to dial it in from Carl's side?
Can you hear me now?
Yep. There we go. Good day.
What it's supposed to be.
All right. Sounds good. Well, first I'd like to open the, open forum with, uh, our two medical professionals. We've got Ashley Erickson and Todd Forkel from our Sanford and Aveiro respectively. Um, we're having a discussion. I imagine that they were invited here to speak in terms of the COVID outbreak. So either which one of you take the floor and, and you'll have a couple of minutes to state your points.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Todd Forkel. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're a little bit quiet, but I think that's what it's gonna be.
Well, good. I, I just appreciate a few minutes to, first of all, thank the community and the council for the action that was taken a month ago or so. I know many in our community did so voluntarily and at great personal pain to themselves and to their business. And it's clear, given our, our numbers, that the mitigation strategies definitely have made a difference. And yet, um, as you and others have pointed out as we've talked, we, and this is good. We haven't seen the percentages of infections and hospitalizations that were predicted and certainly in line if you line them up to the rest of the U.S. And one thing that is clear today, that wasn't the very first time I spoke to you all, is that without, um, a vaccine and, and on the imminent, um, horizon, uh, we're gonna be dealing with COVID for the next 12 to 18 months. And therefore, I think it is important to have plans in place to be, at any given time, more restrictive or less restrictive, given certainly what the environment is. And, um, and Mayor, as you and I and others have spoken, I think it's the, the best plan as you all look to reopen, in air quotes, Aberdeen, is to do it in, in, uh, in phases. Educate our business owners and community to what those different phases mean. And, uh, and have multi-agency, uh, support and alignment such as the South Dakota Department of Health, CDC, as it relates to those guidelines. And I know we, we all wish we could go back to, uh, a normal. And I think, uh, where the period of time we're gonna enter into is gonna be a new normal, uh, for us in this country. And, and given that, I realize the council has a great responsibility to many stakeholders. Um, you know, far beyond a healthcare, which, which I represent. But my ask is, whatever plan you put in place, have, have sound science to it. Communicate it broadly and then be flexible for when, if, um, the outlook changes, which I think we're gonna be dealing with in the next 12 to 18 months. So again, I appreciate the engagement of, uh, both you, Mr. Mayor, and also the council. And also to, uh, I'll make a statement tonight.
Thank you very much, Todd. Holy smokes. Get you weighing in on this issue all along the way. We have everything. Everyone here has a great deal of respect for both of the two of you. And, uh, so your opinions hold a lot of weight. Ashley, have you got anything for us?
Just a hand. I would just ask the council, as you.
Uh, we're not. Wow.
Maybe could everyone mute their lines?
What is the, it's a feedback issue, so this audio is picking up.
I use the microphone on, because the only thing we have sound is Carl's computer to hear.
Gotcha. Is that sound? Striders. Well, those people that asked to be live streamed, they're gonna be able to have, uh, the YouTube to skip ahead through all this technical madness. It'll prove to be a benefit, perhaps.
It's a good thing, you know, the American news isn't here live. You'd be like, well, what's taking so long?
Yeah, no doubt. It'll still get its comments, believe me. Who's children with them? Ashley, could you please try it again? I think that the people on Zoom can probably hear from the head nodding. Uh, just now and just very quietly. I think we might have it about fixed, though.
Carl, I haven't tried talking again.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Quietly. Speak up. I think we'll be good.
All right, so just, uh, I would just ask the council to really look at, um, it's not just an easy light switch of reopening, but how do you phase into that so your businesses and the community understands, um, each level of that phase approach, following those resources from the federal, state, and CDC guideline. Um, the South Dakota and Chamber of Commerce would have the other resources for you to tap into to decide what that phase and approach is. When you talk through data, um, I think what's important, as you guys have said, is the numbers aren't what we projected, which is a good thing. So we thank everyone for the work that they've done. But then with that phase and approach, it's just being flexible on phasing back and forth depending on what that surge or volume looks like. Um, you know, when you talk through the phases, those resources are out there. But that's where from the medical field, um, you'd wanna include Todd or myself on what that looks like just in regards to following the data. So every time you move from a phase to reopening additional businesses, just be mindful of the timeframe. And right now, it's usually within 14 days. Have you seen an additional spike in cases? What does that look like, et cetera? To then bleed you into the next phase of reopening. So again, appreciate, um, the invite to tonight's meeting, and we're here to answer any questions.
Um, holy smokes. I'll, I'll just say these things later. I'm gonna save the question. Um, well, Ashley, thank you very much for coming here. Once again, we appreciate both of your input and have a great deal of respect for both the position that you guys hold in this community and the front lines of keeping us all safe, as well as your, uh, is your input on this issue, of course. So thank you very much. Josh, floor is yours.
I'm just curious, um, Todd or Ashley, just for the sake of information, can you guys define what flattening the curve means? Does it mean less people overall get sick, or does it mean that people don't get sick at the same time? Can you clarify that?
Well, for me, um, flattening the curve means that you, um, elongate the time that you, uh, spend with the disease. But the peaks are such that it doesn't outpace the, the capacity of the healthcare system. So it really is a double-edged sword of, you know, you see countries like Sweden, who just did the herd immunity. They just let it go throughout their population and, and their healthcare systems, uh, get surged upon. Uh, but then you get through it. Our, you know, as a country, we've taken a different strategy to say, how can we mitigate, uh, the impact? So when you hear flattening the curve, it's really just lowering the peak so that you stay within the ability of the healthcare system to handle it. Um, a downside, if you will, I'll put that in air quotes, is you elongate the time that you're spent, uh, dealing with that outbreak, which is what we choose. If we have a choice, we, that's certainly what you would choose.
Um, what is the capacity at Aveira and I guess Sanford as well for COVID beds? I know we talked about that a few weeks ago. I'm just, just for clarification.
So at, at Aveira, we, our surge plan, uh, if you just inside our four walls, we can surge it up into 125 to 135 in terms of the, the spaces we have. And then we have on, um, our Dakota Plains campus and a few other, our Human Performance Center. You know, we can get into the low 200s if need be. Um, for physical space, obviously you need your staff to stay well, not get sick, uh, which can certainly, uh, mitigate, um, your ability. But we can get into the lower, lower to mid 200s.
And Todd, um, state's website says we've had one hospitalized case in Brown County to date. Would you say that's true?
Um, I would say we've had one confirmed. I think there are, I would hazard a guess, we've probably had a handful more. And I say that because the, the test, especially early when it was out, um, there are some things with, uh, false negatives, but it is accurate. We've had one, um, confirmed hospitalization in terms of a positive test. I think, um, given, uh, some of the in, uh, clinical indicators, we've probably had a, a few more. And I'm speaking, obviously, I don't know Sanford's volume. I only know, uh, what happens on this side of the, the fence. But yes, one confirmed case.
Uh, Councilman Ronain has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would throw this open to either, uh, Todd or Ashley. I'm, I'm just curious. Um, you are the medical professionals that we have before us tonight. And maybe you're aware that we have a proposed amendment that was provided, uh, to us, uh, within the last hour that would essentially reopen the community, but require, uh, businesses to, uh, practice within CDC guidelines. Is that something as medical professionals you would recommend to us as a council?
Well, this is Todd. I, I, you know, will obviously let Ashley answer for herself as well. But from my opinion, I would be, uh, and I haven't seen it as well. I would be very, um, clear with your definitions and clarifying expectations of, um, how you go about, uh, being compliant with, again, not having the document in front of me, is I would make sure you do the due diligence as it relates to, um, you know, compliance, um, and, um, having the, uh, technical abilities to meet whatever those, uh, guidelines might be.
Thank you. Anything to add, Ashley?
Without seeing the document, um, I would just say that, that by just saying CDC guidelines, you'd wanna make sure it's fully vetted and understood of what that means, because various businesses could interpret it the way they would like to.
Sure, that makes great sense. So I think, uh, with that, we will move along to our in-house, open forum, uh, speakers in the issue of time here. David Nobstrup with, uh, with Levity Entertainment. David, uh, make sure the green light is on. And then you will have an opportunity to speak. You've got the floor.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor and, uh, city council members. Uh, I sent you an email, which I'm not gonna read what I sent you, because I know you guys can read that. Um, but I do have a few additional comments that, first and foremost, I, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thankfully, in my experience, I, in the public service, I didn't have to make decisions like you guys have had to do. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. It's not easy. But then also, I wanna make sure it's very clear. Um, I, I care about my family and I care about our employees like they're family. Um, they, they are part of our family. And we have, in between our two businesses, over 80 employees. And so everything I say, um, is definitely focused on them. Um, it's not about me, it's about them. And if you know me personally, or if you ask our employees, I think they would back that up. Um, I think, um, I've talked to, um, some of you, um, personally, and I've talked to, um, Aveira and Sanford. Um, I've, I've talked to gov, uh, state officials. And, and I think, uh, and I've talked to a lot of business owners. And I think, um, the amendment that you're, or changes that you're potentially taking are reasonable. It's a, it's a slowly opening of the door of, of Aberdeen. It, it's not a reckless, reckless opening. I think it takes us more in line with the governor's executive order and, and lets businesses be innovative and, and follow CDC guidelines and, and state guidelines. And, um, like I told you, um, in the email this morning, that businesses can, can follow those. And I was even surprised by looking at my own business of certain ways that we can follow those guidelines and still be, um, partially open. We won't be able to open everything, but, and I, I invite you and, um, uh, the other people that are on the Zoom call, like, to come, eh, meet with me and, and let me walk you through either one or both of our businesses, because, um, we, we've spent a lot of time, or I've spent a lot of time and a lot of money, um, caring about our customers and employees and, and looking at what Rabbit City is doing, what you guys are doing, what cities and businesses like ours across the country or across the world are doing. And, and we've taken a lot of steps, proactive steps. And I think a lot of businesses can do that, um, open and care about their customers, their employees, and not, um, put people in a reckless or, or bad position. Um, and then, um, I think the other thing that we need to be aware of is the longer we do this, um, exactly how we're doing it now, the more dramatic impact it will have on our community and our state and our hospitals. Um, I'm not gonna speak for Aveira or Sanford, but I know hospitals across the country are, well, even locally, I guess, are furloughing employees. And they're not doing that because, um, they want to. Um, they have financials that they have to meet and benchmarks to be successful. So if we, um, we, we need those hospitals more than ever, and we need those healthcare professionals. And I, I totally trust and believe that they can handle everything that, um, this crisis might put at them. But, um, there are some hospitals that might not make it because they can't pay their bills. And if they go out of business because we have things locked down, we're gonna be in a lot worse spot and our capacity is gonna be dramatically impacted. And I'm not saying that because of our local hospitals are in that position, because I don't know. But I know nationally, that's, that's a possibility. So it, it, it was a reasonable, I think, approach right away. And as we gather information, um, the data's changed and we know more about the virus and, and the risk and, and how we can mitigate it. So I think, uh, we can slowly reopen businesses. So I would just ask you to take a measured approach. And I know Governor Noem is gonna release her back-to-normal plan, I think is what she called it tomorrow. Um, I still think you can pass this tonight and revisit what you, what she does tomorrow. And, uh, next week, you can revise it based on her recommendations that fit Aberdeen and our situation. I don't think you're gonna get ahead of the game, um, by having this discussion tonight and passing it. Um, I think that just will help us take maybe better steps or more additional steps, um, next week or in the future. And, and I would also ask you to establish a plan, um, of that, what the different phases look like. Because, um, you, nobody knows when they get there, if we don't have a plan. So, um, I would ask that you and, um, business owners and health officials come up with a, a tiered plan and what that new normal looks like and so we know when we get there, um, because that's really important. Businesses can't just open tomorrow. So even if, if you pass this, um, I'm not gonna open my business tomorrow because I don't feel like I'm ready. Um, uh, there's a lot of things that we have on order that we're putting in place. So we can't just unlock the door and say, hey, who, come on in. And I know a lot of other businesses are in the same spot. So having target dates and target, um, targets to hit would be really, really helpful. Um, not just for my business, but the people behind me and other businesses across Aberdeen. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. And I think that that's a good point. I've talked to a number of bar and restaurant owners that are doing internal renovations and so forth, because at the time afforded them, uh, from this forced closure. And, uh, so obviously those people wouldn't be able to jump into operations immediately. But it would be nice to afford them the option to open when they're ready to comply. Next, we've got Dwayne Sutton from the county and also the Millstone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Dwayne Sutton, owner of the Millstone Restaurant. And as of Saturday, it will be a full 30 days that we've been shut down completely. We tried, uh, carry out and delivery for about three days and found that we just weren't doing enough volume to warrant keeping staff on and, and the, the lights on and the grills and fryers and all the equipment on. So we, we made the decision to close. I know we weren't the first, and I know there were a few businesses after we'd made that decision that have followed suit. So we're all in this together. We all know that. And I too wanna thank the council, along with every other decision-making body across the country. There's no playbook for what we're going through. There's nothing to refer to to figure out what the right and wrong answer is. There is no right or wrong answer. Everyone is guessing what to do next. Someday down the road, future generations will look back on the decisions that every level has made here during this pandemic. And they'll separate the good from the bad, the right from the wrong. And, and someday we'll know what the right answer was, but it won't be anytime soon. Um, I, I received a copy of your ordinance, possible, possible change here tonight. And, and I would support the changes that are proposed here, because I think I for, I for one business, in looking at the layout of other businesses, I think we could comply. We could, we could have, uh, booth or table separations and have enough separation between seating that we could, we could, um, live with this ordinance change. If it meant, uh, making our employees all wear masks, we'd be willing to do that. During the first couple of weeks of this, we, you know, we took extra measures for extra additional sanitation, scrubbing after every, every use of every booth, that more than we did, have already done. You know, that's just the restaurant business. You clean a table after it's used. But we took extra steps, bought extra sanitizer and, and went above and beyond what we'd already been doing. So I think we could live with this ordinance. And it was stated, I know David said that, you know, if this is passed tonight, we also won't be opening tomorrow, or maybe not even in the next week or so. Because a month ago, when this all started, or a month and a half ago, whenever, when the schools suddenly shut down, when all the restaurants suddenly shut down, every food supplier in the country was sitting with a stocked, their, their shelves were stocked. And I have no idea the dollar value of fresh produce, fresh dairy, fresh meat that went to the landfill, because there was no market for it. Restaurants weren't buying, schools weren't buying. You know, that, that had to be a tremendous financial blow to those suppliers. So when we make the decision to reopen, if that's next Monday or the following Monday, or whenever it may be, I have no idea, and I've talked to my suppliers, I can guarantee you, we're gonna have a lot of outages, because they don't know when to start restocking their shelves. You know, their, their shelves are probably more empty than they've ever been, because their volume is down. So it's. because their volume is down. So it's going to take a decision, a widespread decision by a lot of communities to slowly open things up, to allow restaurants the ability to slowly start restocking our supply. And we have no idea when they'll be able to fill our orders. So there'll be a lot of questions asked. But I, for one, would support your changes and urge you to take whatever action you feel necessary to help the world get back to whatever the new normal is going to be.
Thank you, Dwayne. I would like to mention, and I've heard that from a handful of people, you know, just the uncertainty has caused people to clamp down up and down supply chains. And it's going to be, it's not like you can just flip on a switch. I don't think anybody's going to be open tomorrow, no matter what happens. But I will say that tonight, so far as I know, Yankton, Rapid, Mitchell, Spearfish, Watertown, Clark, and Huron are all voting to eliminate or scale back their ordinances of this type, as well as the entire state of North Dakota will be opening on Friday, restaurants, bars, and so forth. So hopefully, the regional distribution of supply chain sourcing will begin to open, I guess, and it won't just be us, hopefully, fighting that battle, making orders for produce and so forth. So I wish you the best. I'm definitely a proponent of this, and I hope that we can get back on the limited level to still keep people safe. And I checked out your restaurant while you remained open, and I can tell you that from what I saw, there was an effort made to socially distance people. And I expect cleanliness and so forth as well. So I appreciate what you've done and appreciate your words here today, Dwayne.
Thank you for your time.
Two more speakers. We've got Fallon. Fallon, we've already gone a half an hour. I'm sorry. Try to keep it to about two minutes, if you would.
Okay, I'll try and keep it two minutes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for your time. Thanks for taking my text messages, and my emails, and my phone calls, and for continuing to commit to the process and the solution that we are, I think, all here to render. As Dwayne and as David has mentioned, we are taking a solution-based approach as well. We are taking this time as an opportunity to do some renovation, and we are complying with all of the emergency ordinances that have been set in place. When these, when the emergency ordinance was set in place, it was set in place as a temporary ordinance. And I believe it was quoted two to three weeks. We would watch the numbers and we would reevaluate. I think we're there. I think you know that. And after reviewing what you have suggested, I too am absolutely on board and agree to that. I think, I ask all of you to consider the commitment that you made almost 30 days ago, and consider the businesses that have complied and that have supported the ordinance. On a federal and a state level, we were given the CDC guidelines, and we followed them closely, and we took them very serious. We put a lot of time and energy into making sure that we were following them. As the votes went on before, two to three weeks, I believe, before they were set in place, the businesses took precaution. Equally, we will continue to take precaution. I ask that if you are going to, Todd and Ashley, thank you for weighing in. I think that it's absolutely a priority to make sure that we do consider their opinions in this. And I also ask, the last two or three times that I've spoke, I've asked for an economic plan. And so with that, do we currently have a recovery plan for economic well-being in Aberdeen in place?
I can't speak to that. Could you essentially outline what you're specifically referring to, Fallon?
Maybe a task force, somebody from each sector, medical, the economic, maybe someone from the small business, mayor, you would chair that, and make sure that we're considering the entire community. Making sure that we have a voice for each person and a task force to move forward, to make sure that when and if we do need to implement these emergency ordinances, that we also have a plan. I have a small salon. And before this emergency ordinance was even put into place, I had a recovery plan in place, before it was even put in place. We have followed it, and we have done okay, and will continue to do okay. I have been, I've done my due diligence. On a state and federal level, I have received support and solutions. There's so much power and can be constructively used here at the council. But if we're not going to take control and not be diligent for all sectors, then it's going to be a shame, and there's going to be detriment to that. And so the priority is health and safety. Let's not forget about the economic side of things that could go wrong real quick. And every day and every week that we wait, it gets worse and worse. I'm simply asking for what you asked us small businesses to do, was to partner with you and support you. I'm asking you, again, this is my third time I've been at every meeting but one. I've supported you. I've talked nothing but good, and I've been compliant with the ordinance 100%. I'm asking you now for solutions. I'm asking you for suggestions. So that if and when we do have to put the emergency ordinance back into place, what is the recovery plan? What does it look like? We've talked about the, talking to the county and the taxes, we've talked about, and I'm not looking for a handout. When the state government and the federal government offered solutions, I followed those solutions, and I was successful with those solutions. I'm asking the same from you. If I'm going to be mandate closed against the state and against the federal recommendation, I would ask for solutions.
That's fair. And to be, I guess, frank with you, I've met with literally probably at least 100 individuals on this topic specifically. And so from my vantage point, I kind of viewed that as my own personal lone wolf task force. I've been retrieving a lot of input from a lot of people and measuring what people have done and how they've accommodated this, and also gauging the sentiments across the board. So I feel like I kind of did it on a bit of an unofficial capacity, I guess, but under the flag of being the mayor. And I didn't want it to delay us putting into effect or being, to be used as a delay tactic, to putting into effect the necessary measures to get us back on track. So that was, I guess, our focus. I think maybe once we lift the most stringent of the regulations, we can observe a task force with the intention of, should it get to this point again, let's come up with some reasonable metrics so that this doesn't become something that just fares on forever. And that was ultimately the reason why Councilman Bunsonis and I came up with the language to make this thing sunset each week, so it couldn't be set on the shelf and forgotten about. Thankfully, other cities within our state have taken the lead on this, and we've been able to utilize some of the learnings and talking points that those guys have put forward. So Fallon, I appreciate it. One last speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys.
We've got John Bush now. John, you've got the floor. Make sure the green button is on. Try to limit yourself to about two minutes, just for the sake of time. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm fairly new to Aberdeen. Three, little over three years ago, my wife and I moved out here with, from Boston. So I'm very familiar with our history. I lead some of the students from around here on tours of DC, New York, and Boston, and consider myself a little bit of a history guy. But before that, I did a lot of leadership. And as a pastor in the area, I'm dealing with a lot of families, a lot of people who are confused or scared. And so I just want to kind of provoke us into thinking through, how do we move forward? How do we remove the tape from the playground so the kids can play, right? When is that safe to do? Because that tape around a playground sends, it tells us that the enemy has beat us. We can't even play on our playgrounds. And so I want to encourage us as a community, Aberdeen doesn't seem to me to be the kind of community that aren't forward-thinking. Like, how do we move this forward? I'm an old infantry guy, jumped out of perfectly good airplanes. How do we move forward? We got to move forward. We can't just sit back and let this thing destroy us. And if we don't do something, folks, it will. I promise you, it will. 47,000 people walk in and out of the Empire State Building every day. 47,000 people. Now, they may not be doing that right now. But I've been in environments where there's lots of people. On Good Friday, I was in Kessler's. It was like it was Black Friday at Walmart. It was wall-to-wall people. That's this Good Friday, right? We have been, we don't mind going to Walmart and being in a crowd. We don't mind that there's five or six people at Starbucks working behind the counter. I don't think we really believe this COVID thing is that dangerous. Or Kessler's would not have been allowed to stay open after Good Friday, and Starbucks would be shut down. Folks, we've got to move forward. We have to move forward. There is a spiritual toll on the people. And I'm not talking about Christian, I'm just talking about, I am looking into the eyes of these children, and these parents, and these moms. And we need to stand up and say, you know what, we're going to lead us out of this. We're going to take a few steps. That would be my encouragement to you gentlemen, and those of you that I see on the screen here, ladies and gentlemen. We need to start moving forward. That plan, I love this plan, all right? At least it gets, restaurants have the opportunity to say, yes, we can open up. We got to practice, we got to do our due diligence. We have to do our due diligence. I agree with that. But if we don't start moving forward soon, folks, the toll is going to be hard. It's going to be hard. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. What do I do with this? I think they're there, so.
Hello?
Who is this?
This is David Kozar.
David, I'm going to have to put you on hold, my man. You can, I didn't have you sign up in advance. We appreciate you calling in. Perhaps next week, we'll catch you on an open forum. But you're more than welcome to continue to listen as we go. We're simply out of time for our open forum. We've got those other issues. Nothing personal, just the protocol around here.
Okay.
And also, I don't know how to hang up.
See you. And having the restaurants in this barber shop, when that's all. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thanks. Sorry about that, guys. I learned how to operate the hang-up button on this telephone. I'm good at it with my cellphone. First order of new business, ordinance 200403, rezone certain described property from C3 district to R3 district for Lot 5. Oh, Councilman Bunsonis, have you got something to add in the open forum segment?
Trying to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Question for Ashley and Todd. Under the current emergency ordinance number three, you basically could be operating, I believe, your clinics. Obviously, you're operating the hospital, but as I have found out, with a physical being canceled, some of those places are not operating, maybe to full capacity. So what is it going to take for Avera and Sanford to start feeling comfortable with those appointments again?
Hi, Todd.
Okay, Ashley.
I'll start, and you can add on. So some of that just ties into the PPE. So again, having enough supply for the demand, testing. You know, right now, we have all of the temp checks, the CDC guidelines of getting our employees in, et cetera. But as we would phase in this, I would envision, you know, let's just talk elective surgeries, we'll probably be coming in that Phase 2 or 3. And a lot of that ties into the state with Governor Noem having the executive order. But from a federal level, our state needs to reassure that we have proper PPE in order to take on those services. So if we do surge, we're not in a crisis there. Looking at testing and testing capabilities, which is still a supply and demand issue that we're working through. And then from a state level, they just need to be able to say that they have proper tracing in place, so that if we identify an individual with COVID, we're able to mitigate it, and the health department's able to put that tracing in place to see who else maybe they exposed. So there's different things or roadmaps in the healthcare sector that's being rolled out. Again, I'm not speaking for Avera, but as Todd and I work through this, there'll be a phased-in approach with our roadmap of reopening elective surgeries. Let's talk screening for mammograms, diagnostic screening for colonoscopies. There's certain things that we are doing that are essential so that it's still life-saving, but we need to get back to offering our healthcare needs because we have patients who have care that have been delayed that could turn into a cancer, as an example. Todd, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, everything Ashley said is correct on this side of the fence, too. I'll add, it's a great question, Dave. I can tell you anecdotally, a handful of stories where people over the last six, eight weeks have delayed aches, pains, dizziness, that have turned into strokes, heart attacks, cancer diagnosis. So we've definitely, and there's also a study nationally that shows that stroke mortality has risen dramatically in the U.S. For that very reason is people are afraid, anxious, to visit their local clinic and/or hospital. And we need to get back to taking care of patients, for sure. We've been in process, really, since the day we, maybe not the day, but a couple of weeks into being shut down on a lot of our outpatient, to begin, what does that process look like? What are the metrics? Who needs to be involved? And you'll, tomorrow, when the governor speaks, she's going to address multiple things, one being healthcare. There'll be a roadmap there that we clearly hit those triggers now to begin that process. So just like you as a governmental entity, putting together a plan to instill confidence in the, you know, businesses within the community to deliver their services, we're in that same boat. And I feel confident in the coming days and weeks, you'll see a process unveiled and protocols that will, because as I outlined, you know, when I first, this is just so fast evolving within the U.S. and in the world. Really, with, we don't have decades of information with this disease, like with many other things we have. So when this, you know, first hit, there was a lack of a lot of information. Now, there's a better understanding that we're going to deal with this, just like we do with a flu outbreak and other things. I'm not correlating it to a flu, but just like we have that outbreak, we're going to have to manage and work and care for people. That's our duty. And I feel confident that we're in a position today, quite frankly, as we start to kind of turn the spigot on a little bit in phases, that we're ready to do so. And as I alluded on the front end, this is important to people, because I've seen where it could have been a bad scenario by putting off something that was of greater significant importance.
Thank you, Todd. Ashley, what is your surge capacity? That was an issue we got from Todd, but not Sanford?
Yep. So again, collaborative effort with Avera, the county, and Sanford. So within our facilities, we would surge up to 78 beds. And that is capacity where we have overflowed patient beds into outpatient units. And so when you had Scott Meitz and JR there last week, we talked about the Department of Health, really looking at Brown County, saying there was a need of surge at the peak of 287 beds. So between Avera and Sanford, we were, had a deficit of 36 beds, which then we disclosed to you that we had an alternative care site for those 36 beds.
Thank you. Anything else before we move along to our old business, which does include, obviously, the discussion around COVID itself? So I will move along. New business, Idemay, ordinance 200403, rezone certain described property from C3 district to R3 district for Lot 5, Block 40, Thomas Edition, and all of that. Brett Bill, here to tell us about that. What have you got?
920 Lincoln Street South, requesting to rezone it in order to permit a multifamily unit to, from residential to commercials, so they can have that multifamily unit. Staff recommends approval.
Got a motion to remain in a second from Lunsman. Carl, give me a roll call.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Who did this?
Aye.
Mayor Sean.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got ordinance 200404, to rezone certain described property from R2 district to M district to M district for Lot 1, NSU Athletic Field Edition of South State Street. Brett, what about that one?
This is just the next step that NSU is taking in order to complete their athletic pro, their athletic.
for lot one, NSU athletic field addition of South State Street. Brett, what about that one?
This is just the next step that NSU is taking in order to, uh, complete their athletic, their athletic, uh, complex. They're rezoning it to municipal, just like the rest of the campus. Staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
A motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley? Ronin?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Wright?
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson? Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Sean.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the one that everyone's here to talk about. Discussion of possible first reading and passage of resolution 2404R, extending ordinance number 2404 or 0405, known as COVID, emergency ordinance number three.
Move approve.
Got a, who is the second? Got a motion from Ronin and a second from Bunson. I know that there is an amendment to be proposed here tonight. Uh, is that, uh, who will be presenting that to us tonight?
I can share my screen, Travis, because I have a copy of it, but I'm not sure the audio quality. So why doesn't maybe Alan, um, take over if that works?
Sounds great. Okay. Uh, thank you, Councilman Wright. Appreciate just a minute to share some of the thinking and data that has gone into this resolution that, uh, is before us today. Um, we don't say prayers in our city meetings, but I know all of us have been, um, praying diligently for wisdom and improved conditions uh, for not only ourselves here in Aberdeen, but across our great nation. It is a case where all ships in the harbor rise and fall together. We feel very ready to have this considered and passed this evening economically and by the numbers and socially as well. And, uh, just some of the thinking that's got into this. Uh, we know and has been mentioned previously that earlier ordinances were, um, which we have adopted and which exist tonight were based on models that are no longer valid. The WHO and CDC estimates for 20% hospitalization, 5% ICU. We know that those models are not correct any longer. And the purposes of those ordinances was to flatten the curve, not to eliminate the virus. Um, just looking at, uh, some of the numbers that, um, have been brought up in the last few minutes. Again, uh, the death rate to, to date in Brown County is zero. Hospitalizations, um, 97% of positive cases so far do not require hospitalizations. We've established that, uh, our surge capacity is about, uh, close to 300. And, um, we have a total of 10 positive cases in the last two and a half weeks, 18 days and zero in the last three days. Uh, even if we expand our vision a little bit, consider surrounding counties, the people who do business in Aberdeen. Um, the six surrounding counties had a total population of 27,000 to the 39,000 that live in Brown County. And, uh, that adds only six additional positive cases and not a single of those required hospitalization. So, um, what we can see by the numbers is that statistically, we should be ready to move forward. Uh, these are good numbers. Um, economically, I'd like to address that just for a second. Uh, on every street and in every neighborhood, there are, uh, people who are hurting deeply, uh, who've had hours cut, jobs lost, uh, income lost. Um, we're part of the surveys that are done across the country. Wallet Hub, uh, did a national survey, uh, just this last week and said that, uh, 30% of Americans are just one month away from running out of money. Uh, 160 million Americans are three months away from going completely broke. And so, um, you know, in South Dakota, there have been 25,000 unemployment claims in five weeks. That is 50 times the norm. And I would remind that these, um, stats are interesting, but they're not due to the virus itself. They're due to the regulations or the restrictions that have been imposed. And so economically, we should be considering that, um, with the stress on supply chains, um, now concerned about food security that is being discussed, um, with everything that's causing devastation to families and livelihood, that we look for something that can, um, not only be safe and preserve lives, but also livelihood. And so in considering all these things, um, we're, um, looking at, um, the resolution that besides the local businesses who've given input here tonight, um, we know that, um, the longer that restrictions last, the more permanent the damage will be. And, um, while we still have businesses that can be opened, we should look to reopen them. And, um, given the favorable data that's now available, uh, the step of this resolution is reasonable. It's safe. Um, it does include language there regarding restaurants, salons. Uh, just a couple of words on that. Um, every restaurant is required to complete a serve-safe training and that provides the tools and the know-how to sanitize and go above CDC guidelines. And it gives them, um, this resolution gives, um, our food establishments the choice and opportunity to reopen. And patrons also have the choice to stay home or eat in and support those businesses. And, um, conversations iPad, uh, show that most restaurants that are doing carryout are limping along at between 70 to 80% uh, reduction in revenue. And that too is not sustainable. And each of these businesses provides, uh, a very key and critical component in our community, um, services. Uh, salons also have the ability and training to maintain distances and CDC guidelines. Um, emails all of us have received early this week have detailed some of the steps that show that, um, not only have some of our, um, salon entities been doing that, but they are well-prepared to, uh, go beyond even the standards that now exist. And so, uh, we're certainly meeting and exceeding the thresholds asked of us by CDC. So, um, looking at the resolution, there are 10 key provisions there that I think address the fears that some might have about how this would look and, um, how can we move confidently into the marketplace and enjoys the same services that we had before? Um, I would point out, um, very strongly that, um, with this resolution, um, participation, uh, as a customer is optional. Um, opening and when the decision to, uh, to open are completely up to, uh, the businesses involved. Um, but, uh, it's data-driven. Um, it offers precautions here. This is not returning us to how we did things before. Uh, it uses best practices that we have observed and been utilizing for about six weeks. Um, by adopting this resolution, it will get Aberdeen back to work safely without undermining the progress that we have already, um, made in this battle. And so, uh, just wrapping up, um, it paves the way forward and still lets us protect, uh, the most vulnerable, those who have health concerns who are elderly and optionally can participate, uh, and get out of their homes or not. Thank you, Alan. Does anyone have any questions for, uh, Alan as it relates to any of these points? Or do you think that it makes sense to run through them one by one?
I would have a question if I may.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Ronin has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Alan, you and I, I appreciate you visiting with me about this, uh, last week. Um, uh, and I haven't had an opportunity to truly study this because I've only received this, uh, within the last hour, of course. And I, and I don't think the public has seen it at all either. Uh, I'm, I'm curious, um, um, the medical professionals that were speaking to us a little while ago suggested that we ought to, um, have, have, uh, standards. We ought to be relying on science to, uh, to, uh, to help gauge our reopening. Have you had involvement from physicians or scientists or anything in, in, in setting these standards? Is there some way we know that these are going to be effective?
Hmm. Um, that's a great question. Um, I have had input from, um, a handful, uh, I'll say four, uh, MDs who are, um, close associates of mine um, that have informed the thinking on this. Um, many parts of this are, um, patterned after steps that Rapid City is taking. Uh, they too have been blessed with a low infection rate in Pennington County. And so, uh, we see ourselves being somewhat abreast of them in the curve, in the infection rates, the hospitalizations. Um, so, uh, in terms of science, um, what I think we can set aside are some of the models. Uh, the projections, I think, vary, um, very extremely widely. NPR reports that May 12th is a curve for this area. Uh, you hear June, but I think what also is clear is that, uh, again, economically, if we pin our decisions to those points on the calendar and decide that in June we'll take this up and have watchful waiting until then, um, and then see how the, the tail end of the, the curve is going at that point. Uh, you know, the Nike curve, uh, I think that, um, we will shut down the city, you know, irreparably. I really do. Um, and there's, um, you know, we've heard evidence tonight, um, from business owners. Um, I'd, I'd welcome input from, um, others who are proposing it as well, Travis and, and Josh. But those are some of the key things that I would offer, um, to address that question.
Sure. And I've had extensive conversations with people at the Department of Health as well as the state epidemiologist himself. And, um, it's been a, it's been a series of conversations through and through. And I'm glad that Rapid City did take this step because they were one of the first to propose an ordinance that kind of set the model for us in the first place. And I think that they did a good job of framing up their explanation. I think in learning that we have 278, uh, surge capacity beds here, we'd be looking at needing to have 4,630 cases active at the same time, in which all of the time, we've had 30 cases here. You know, the purpose of closing, uh, businesses has been to protect the hospital system. That's a noble endeavor. I think nobody can argue with that. No person voted against that. We need to protect our hospital system. But when the discussion goes from 70% infection and 20% hospitalization to the numbers that we see now, which are just a fraction of each of those numbers, that threat just simply doesn't exist. And the healthcare professionals in our state are having to, uh, having to, uh, agree with that statement. All the ones that I talked to. I've talked to a number of doctors off the record because, um, they're excited to get back to work themselves. Some of those have lost a lot of hours. Uh, some of those, um, have expressed to me personally that they'd really liked to, uh, get businesses back open, but they don't feel confident coming to a public forum and, uh, and speaking out on those things. So I would agree. I think that, uh, Alan was right, that science, um, definitely has, uh, has been brought into this equation. And, um, all the medical professionals to the top of the state have been weighing in on, on all these things. And I've had a chance to meet with some of these people in, uh, in regards to specific preparations that both our community as well as different employers here have taken. And everyone has been very impressed.
Has the state epidemiologist seen this proposed ordinance and has he said that...
Nope. Uh, I don't believe he has. But I believe that he has probably seen the Rapid City one. But I, I didn't mean to allude the fact that he has endorsed this. I said that I've had conversations with him about the condition of this, uh, of this environment.
Has he, has he warned you against this approach?
He sure hasn't.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
You know, the one thing I would maybe add to this discussion is, um, previously today, I went to the, uh, South Dakota Department of Health website. And if you're wondering what that is, it's doh.st.gov/news/coronavirus-aspx. And on that website, you can see number of hospitalizations in the state. It gives you current number of hospitalized and the number that have been hospitalized ever due to coronavirus. Uh, in the entire state of South Dakota right now, there are 61 people currently hospitalized. And if you look at the number that we've ever had in the state of people hospitalized, that number is 150. So 150 people have been hospitalized due to coronavirus in the state of South Dakota since this started. And as we've heard earlier, uh, the numbers, our max capacity is roughly 300. So let's say double all the cases in South Dakota. We have the capacity in Aberdeen, um, to take care of that number of cases. So that makes me feel, um, very comfortable that Aberdeen, at least on, on the healthcare side, is well-positioned to deal with this.
Especially when you consider that, the rate of hospitalization. Um, when Rapid City put out their announcement last week was less than 5%. Go ahead, Councilman Lunsman.
I did not see in here, are you guys looking at a certain date? You looking at immediately? What, what is the proposal on the table for this amendment? For a date of an activation?
Would go into effect immediately. And, um, you know, as we've learned from all of our business people that have chimed in, it's not something that would allow for, I mean, practical, uh, resources won't allow for most of these businesses that have been closed to open immediately. But they'll be able to open along the, their timeline. And they'll have plenty of time to look into how they will execute the different requirements here. It's not a heck of a lot different than our original amendment, but it is more strict than that.
And just for all of those that are out there listening or will be listening or, or will list, uh, get on YouTube and, and listen to this tomorrow. Um, where, do they just contact the city for their, their questions? Because they're gonna have a million questions. Hey, does this work? Can I do this? Can I do that? Who is their go-to person to ask all those questions?
Well, I can tell you, I've been fielding that ever since any of these ordinance have passed. I bet I've talked to 40 people that have asked, hey, can I do this? Can I do that? Or maybe not 40, but dozens. Um, and so I'll expect that to continue. I will put out some messaging and we'll get it on the city's website. Um, you know, that outline very specifically this document itself as well as kind of a summarized version.
And then the other thing is too, is that i- if there are checks on these businesses to make sure that they're following these guidelines, who will be doing that and, and who would the businesses expect to be knocking on their door? So that they understand when somebody does knock on the door, that's all they're doing is, is making a check, just so we under, or they understand.
The, uh, the Aberdeen Police Department, and they have been doing that currently. Uh, I'd gotten questions about nail salons, swimming pools, et cetera, et cetera. Order them to the police department. They, they go and make their... And the presence of a police officer in a business is taken very seriously.
Absolutely. I, I just want to make sure that everybody that's listening. And we, we probably understand more of it here in to a certain extent, but not everybody is going to have that afforded that ability. Um, so I'm just making sure that when they do re-listen to this, they will have a, a guide.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is I've put 100% of my time and energy in the last weeks into this, uh, not this particular ordinance, but into this issue as it relates to keeping the city safe, making sure that people are exercising necessary precautions from a business level, reviewing what people are doing. That's not going to stop. I'll be reaching out to every bar owner that's closed and explaining what the restrictions entail. And I can work alongside of Lynn and, as well as, uh, as our city attorney, Ron, to make sure that, uh, that people are aware of the ins and outs and specifications and so forth. But I dedicate the rest of my week, at the very least, to outreach and making sure that people are aware of what these... Uh, but it's very clearly worded. I don't think that it'll pose much of a challenge. And every single bar, restaurant that I dealt with prior to closing, um, had already taken on quite a lot of measures to prevent the spread of the virus. So I think that this will be warmly received. And I think most of them are probably already were adhering to this before closure.
Councilman Bunson, do I hear you?
I would, um, I would suggest that, um, to Councilman Lunsman's question of who they contact, that should be, uh, Ron and Lynn, uh, to enforce this. Um, I also noticed that there is no enforcement mechanism on this, uh, particular ordinance. Like, uh, this appears to be copied directly from the Rapid City, uh, ordinance that they're talking about tonight.
It's not. And this one is a bridge to the other, so it lives in conjunction with that in terms of enforcement.
Where is the, um, like in ordinance three? If you look at ordinance three, I believe there is, uh, enforcement language in that ordinance. Isn't that correct, Ron?
In fact, that, um, section B, paragraph, uh, two talks about that. And actually, Councilman Bunson, in the resolution that is on the screen, uh, well, if, whoever could scroll down, uh, there is a, uh, an extension of paragraph three of section B as part of that resolution. So that enforcement would stay in the enforcement mechanism, that would remain.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out.
This is, uh, Councilman Remley. I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilman Remley.
Um, speaking of enforcement, and I, I'm not comfortable voting for this right now because, uh, it goes into effect right away. I have received some information regarding the beef plant, and there doesn't look like they're doing much enforcing out there. And I would be happy to show this to council people. I cannot share it publicly. It came from an individual who was a little nervous about doing that, and understandably why. So I, you know, if we want to delay it a week, I would, I would be willing to do that because I have talked to many, many people today about opening up, you know, soft opening, and I've gotten, you know, more people in favor of that than not. So I, I would like to delay this a week and see how, and, and show this information to some, some other people and see, see what they think. And with that, I'll just say, we'll wait for the governor's announcement tomorrow. Sounds like she's finally taking charge and doing something, and I'm encouraged that she is. So that comes tomorrow. So I wouldn't be, I, I wouldn't hesitate to, to wait at least a week before we voted on this again.
Councilman Remley, I think it bears noting that the South Dakota Department of Health has spent a significant amount of time onsite at the beef plant. Everyone is taking that seriously. I've personally spent a lot of time out there. I know that there are some employees that might be taking, or maybe other people in the community that might be making allegations, but I can personally assure you that they have taken quite a lot of mitigation measures, and the South Dakota Department of Health has been a staple out there over a number of different times to ensure that they're enforcing what they're claiming to.
If anybody's going to believe Achilles healed, it will be that. I mean, that's my opinion. So I'm still not comfortable voting for this tonight.
Might I point out though, that the beef plant is in the county, it's not in the city. This ordinance would not affect really the, the beef plant itself, maybe the people that live in town, but not, not the beef plant itself.
And it's also probably worth noting that one of the findings of the Smithfield outbreak was it wasn't quite as much, or at least what they put out was that it wasn't quite as much the, their plant itself that was causing the spread, it was the living conditions of their employees was causing the community spread that many of their employees had. But I, I can tell you, I don't see a lot of beef plant employees when I frequent bars or restaurants in this community. I think that they serve a little bit more of a passive and interconnected role within our community, sticking to themselves primarily, as, as a rule, at least that's been my observation.
I would add to that, from the article in today's Aberdeen paper, it was clear that workplace education was a key factor there, or lack of it, in the Smithfield factory. They have over 40 languages that are spoken there, and the instructions were being given in English. And so you had a great disconnect there in communicating with them, some of the sanitizing guidelines. We don't have nearly that sort of an issue here at Dimcota.
Yeah, well, yeah, speaking to languages, there, every single cultural group represented at the plant with employees has a supervisor that speaks their language and is familiar with their culture. And so all messages are delegated from management through a cultural representative to the members of that culture within, within their plant. So I think that's a very effective way to get that sort of messaging through, and I think that hopefully will prove to be beneficial. Yes?
I'd like, you know, echo what, what Alan had talked about earlier, and I guess I would, I've also want to answer one of Councilman Ronan's questions. He, he said he hadn't had a copy of this, and I, and I apologize for that. We were working on some of the language on this until literally 4:50 today. So it's not like you were intentionally not included in, in this information, but I think kind of what we're all saying, and we're not trying to minimize the seriousness of what COVID is, but we also understand, as Todd said earlier, that this could keep us into a kind of a quote new normal for the next 12 to 18 months. And I think we would all agree that we can't keep businesses closed for a year and a half. That's just unsustainable. So the question becomes, how do we responsibly open up businesses? And I think this amendment that has been created does a lot in doing that. This isn't back to normal. This isn't everything's the way it was before. There's still a lot of restrictions in place. There's masks, there's separation, there's social distancing. There's a lot of mechanisms in place here to help us both keep businesses open and also keep the public safe. And also to echo again what Alan said earlier, if, if you're in a high-risk category, if you have an immune system that's compromised or you're elderly, you should stay home. We're not saying because restaurants can, can be open on a limited basis and that hairstyles are open and everybody needs to run out and do that, and I suspect a lot of people won't. But I think it's important that we leave that up to the community to make that decision. We can't possibly legislate everybody's actions. But I think we do need to give the opportunity to business, local businesses, to be open. I think that's important. As Alan said, there's a lot of people in a lot of pain right now. And I, I will support this amendment, and I hope the rest of the council does as well.
Councilman Rux.
So a few things on this, and like I say, I did get a copy from Alan last week. Some of us have not gotten copies, but this was a working copy till 4:50, apparently, correct? And in looking at it, while, while it is pretty good, I right now have eight possible amendments to this document, which basically outlines some things that would clarify certain things on it. But with that being said, that's the one you gave me right before the meeting, or Travis did.
Okay. This one makes you look at last week's.
No, no, I, I gave it his, and that's why I was glancing, because it was even different than the one I got last week, which to me, if, if that's, like I say, typically in situations like this, we would prefer to have us all have time to go through this. And, because like I say, some of my, my, my amendments that I'd want to make, I need to run by my, our city attorney, because I need to get that language right on this. So for me, and my timeframe has always been, you know, pushing around that May timeframe, we need to look at what we're going to do. And it'll be real interesting to hear what the governor says tomorrow, because she's not only going to have a reopen plan, but she's going to have the new, new modeling numbers that they've run, which is state-specific and maybe more area-specific, which would be interesting to have those numbers as well. It'd also be nice if we could get this on a web, the website to where people could look at it. And like I say, having, this is not just a, a simple amendment to an ordinance, this is a rewrite of an ordinance we currently have, and it's pretty extensive, well put together, I will admit that. It is well put together. I don't know if I'm there tonight, just because like I say, I, I'm right now at eight amendments, and, and that is something that-
Why don't you list some of your concerns, Councilman Rux?
Some of it, on section D, requires handwashing at regular intervals. What is that regular interval? Is it before and after each shift? Is it, what times during the shift? And I, I do have a recommendation for that, of not exceeding one hour. Clean and disinfect lottery machines between each customer. How do those ensure that, since many of our casinos are not staffed? How do they ensure that those places are washed and sanitized? It is also possible that machines are shut off to where they're six-foot distance. How do I work out language for that? In salons, let's say clients, are clients required to be masked? And if we can require it, would we recommend that they also be masked? As far as restaurants, would it recommend, because right now it says that, you know, you maintain six-foot distance, but there is no requirement for disinfecting chairs, bar stools, tables, any of those high chairs in between each customer, it just says, and is that a CDC guideline? It's not specifically in the CDC guidelines, but, and those are just a few, and like I say, I was just a quick brief read through it. So like I say, for me, like I say, while this is a very good starting point, I think that it should be, you know, like I say, Councilman Ronan just got it an hour ago. And, and that does, does not guarantee the time that we can go through this, ask our questions, and if we have possible changes, work with you guys, as well as working with our attorney to get those amendments in. Because it'd be nice to be able to propose an amendment that has as many concerns as possible dealt with it, rather than now let's, we propose an amendment, now let's start haggling about it through the process. So like I say, it's a good starting point, and I think we need to start having this discussion of when we open. We, we can't wait till June. I think there's everyone in agreement that we can't wait till June. And not only that, let's take the cities that are looking at reopening, they have less than two active cases in their county. Aberdeen or Brown County is still at 12. That is down from this weekend, we were at 15, so we're heading in the right direction. But most of those counties have two to zero cases that are active in their county. So, and, and like I say, still, even after day, only a little over 1.5% of Brown County has been tested at all. So, and that, we're running at about a 6% of those being tested have tested positive. So those are numbers that you look at there, and our total active infections throughout South Dakota was starting to go down, now it's kind of going back up, but I think that's because we've now hit that Smithfield bump where some of those are coming out. So like I say, for me, just, that's my thoughts on this right now. And, and like I say, but it is something that it, it, we need to have this discussion on, when are we going to reopen? And not only that, I think Ms. Fallon, is that correct? Is correct. We need to have probably some groups, a, a group put together that brings us recommendations on what do certain things look like? When do we have, if cases start going back up, let's say next fall? How do we deal with that in a way that we can, we can involve you guys rather than just us sitting up here, so we can have a better plan?
May I be right, the mayor?
Councilman Ronan.
Thank you, sir. I'm not going to repeat Clint's comments, but I share them. We heard Ms. Helm earlier tonight say that we needed to formulate a plan. Last week, the mayor suggested that we ought to appoint a committee comprised of business people, of medical people, to recommend to us. I think, I agree with Clint that, that this is a, I think this is a thoughtful resolution. I know you guys put a lot of work in on it. I don't know if, from a scientific standpoint, from a medical standpoint, if each component of this works, and, and if we could get the attention of some people with medical backgrounds, if, if the mayor has been in contact with the state's epidemiologist, and we can get his attention again to give us guidance on what we can do safely, what we can't do, I would love to see that committee form that the mayor discussed last week. And if, if we could do that on expedited basis, and if that means we come back later in the week and, and adopt some, some resolution, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do that, and I'm, I'm good with that. But I, I worry, you know, we are, you know, we're a deputy sheriff, we're a lawyer, we're, you know, we don't have the, the type of expertise we need to make these decisions. We need to get that expertise and be guided. You know, I, we are all doing the best we can, but this is, this is above my pay grade.
Mayor, Mike Olson has comments also. Sorry, you can't see.
Mike Olson, as far as yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I've been listening to a lot of things here, and very good information. What I did hear from the hospital is that they did say we need a very good plan. What I didn't hear from the hospital is that they said we should open up tomorrow. I think this is a good plan that our fellow counselors have come up with. It appears to be a very good plan. However, I don't believe that it should be instituted tomorrow. I felt we were very cautious when we started bringing this ordinance forward, trying to protect the people in our community, not just to protect our hospitals, which of course we want to, but we instituted an ordinance to protect our people and our families and our community. We, we started those ordinances and gave the public at least seven days to review those ordinances before we made them abide by them. Tonight, we want to suddenly remove these restrictions overnight. I don't think that is fair to the public. I think they should be able to review this. I did receive numerous emails, nearly 30 emails concerning this issue, and it was split 50/50, those that wanted to remain closed and those that wanted us to open. I, just this week, had a family member that became infected with COVID-19. I think a lot of folks that aren't affected and don't have family that has been affected seem to put it off that we're somehow protected here in Aberdeen. And I think we have been protected thus far due to diligence of our entire community being very cooperative with these restrictions and sacrificing to great measures to protect our community. And I cannot support this amendment tonight. However, I think it's a good step for our plan to reopen our community. And I concur with Councilman Ronan and Rux that we need other professionals in this planning process. And I'm more than happy to open our community just as soon as I, I feel that it's safe and possibly not have any new cases in 10 days or something like that. I would feel much more comfortable. And so I, I just cannot support this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Olson. Does anyone else have anything to add on this amendment before we take a vote on resolution?
I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
Oh.
That was just, that wasn't for the amendment, though. We haven't, well, that's what we've been talking about, but we haven't had a motion.
That's correct.
Councilman Lunsman has something to add?
I put, I put this out on my Facebook account and, and also received emails as Councilman Olson had mentioned, and I do appreciate every single person that commented, sent something. I didn't get to get back to every single one because there was just, the volume was extreme. It was a lot, and I appreciate all the comments. I think the percentage that I received was at least 70% open. And I didn't do the exact math, but I would say it's at least 70% told, told everybody it opened. And, and I agree with that, that we do need to open, but, but we need to do this right. I have to concur, as I listen to Clint and Rob and, and Mike, that I want to give everybody a path to open and open soon, very, very soon, but I don't want to do it willy-nilly, and that's one of the reasons I asked, is who will interpret what is here on this piece of paper? Because I think there are a lot of things on this piece of paper that will need to be interpreted depending on the business at hand. Some of them will be simple, some of them won't, because we can't interpret what each business will want to know and, and ask. I would really love to have these things sewn up so everybody doesn't have to inundate the, the city phone lines in order to say, hey, how does this work? Or how am I supposed to do this? Or should I do this? Or should I not? If we do it right, right away, I think we can give everybody that, that path quicker, easier, and better. I'm also with, with Rob here, is that if we need to meet again in two days or three days this week, I'm all for it. I do think we need to get all our businesses open very, very soon. very soon, as quickly as possible, but we need to do it right. So that's where I'm at. I will not support this at this moment with some more input from professionals. I think we need to get Avira, and we need to get Sanford, and we need to get business people, the opinion on what questions will they have for this piece of paper and answer them on this piece of paper. And then I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bunson. So I will take a motion for a read on the resolution.
I move too.
A motion from Johnson.
Can you repeat that? I can't hear you. There's a lot of echo.
Oh, sorry. I'm taking a motion in a second for a read on the resolution that we, it was something we should have done before discussion, but I'm out of order. Motion from Johnson in a second from Reif. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Hang on, someone said, Mayor.
I can't see or hear it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ron. I would like to just make sure that we're all clear for the, for the minutes, that there was an original motion to approve the resolution that would extend the entire ordinance. And then now there is this amended motion to, to essentially substitute it for the document that's on the screen. I don't know if you and the, in the council chambers are seeing the same screen we are, but it's the, it's that substitution essentially of the, of the resolution that was as part of the agenda packet, which is now being substituted for this one. So I want to make sure that as the residents are listening in and as the council members are voting here, that we're clear that the amendment is basically to substitute out the old, the resolution that was in the packet for this one that is being offered by Councilman Johnson as the original mover on this.
Thank you. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux?
No.
Olson?
No.
Bunson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
No.
Ronay?
No.
Remley?
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does fail. We'll take a voice vote or a roll call vote on the first reading and passage of the resolution 2406, extending ordinance 200405.
I'd like to ask a question before I leave. Is that possible?
Go ahead.
All right. My question is this. How long is this going to take before we, we know? I want to know how long you want, how long this, this committee wants. How much time do you want to let us know? Because I think what you should do then is go out there to Menards and the Runnings and the rest of them places that are open and are not doing any social distancing. That's all I got to say. I know it's not, I know your guys' names is not thrown. I am a very smart man, but this is a bunch of bullshit is what's going on here.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Well, Carl, give me a roll call vote on the extension of ordinance 200405.
Councilmember Remley?
I don't, I don't even know what to talk about.
Now it's the original resolution as it was presented in the agenda packet.
To extend.
Yes.
Lunsman? Yes.
Reif?
Yep.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye. Thank you.
Mayor Shawman?
No. Next, we'll move along to section.
Can I just interrupt for a moment, please?
Ah, go ahead.
I would suggest that we appoint, that, that people were appointed to a task force that starts tomorrow, that would come back to us within a day or two with, with a phased approach and timeline to reopen the businesses that we have shut down. And so I would suggest that that would be two business owners. Fallon and Dwayne would be, I think, good choices. I don't know where everyone else is at. I think Ashley and Todd need to be involved in that meeting. And, and maybe a couple doctors for varying views to help us through, to get us some language so we can act on it maybe even yet this week.
Councilman Bunson, would you suggest that regular businesses, say restaurants, casinos should be expected to maintain the same exact standards as hospitals or nursing homes or who are entrusted to protect vulnerable and compromised people?
I think we need the opinions of a variety of people, and that is, we need the health professionals that have to deal with this. But I'm also trusting that we are neighbors and we will, we will come up with the best plan. But we cannot ignore the healthcare professionals in this discussion.
I just don't think it should be a two to one ratio.
Well, Mr. Nurstrips out there, too. And I know that in talking with him, he's done a lot of, dug a lot of information out on this, so.
Can, I, would you, would you suggest that some council members that are also business owners or are involved in business be part of it?
Sure. And I think your timeline is good. I'll call a special meeting for Wednesday of this week so that we can also review the findings of this committee as well as the recommendations of Governor Noem, which we issued tomorrow. So I'll call that meeting for April 29 at 5:30 PM for a new vote on this resolution when weighing in the consideration of those individuals who will be speaking tomorrow.
Just with the last thing, too. David and Dwayne, you both own restaurants. Can, is it possible you talk to your suppliers and kind of get a timeline on what they're looking at for being able to resupply you as well? Because that also plays into, if it's three weeks out, you know, that's more information. But if they think that they can get you guys mostly, I mean, we're going to be dealing with some sort of shortages of items. But just give us that information, what your suppliers, like Cashway USA Food, that type of stuff are saying.
We were stocked up for savings, so we, that's not a very good answer or question.
Most of your stuff is frozen, though.
We don't eat anything right now because that freezer is full.
Yeah. Dwayne, though, ahead.
Dwayne's position is a lot different than mine, and my position is a lot different than a lot of other restaurants.
But then if, yeah, because you're in a different situation, dealing with more frozen, more longer term stuff, where Dwayne, of course, has coolers with meat, all that other stuff. But could you, if you could get, just email us the information, that'd be great. So.
I will say that if a lot of the cities that the mayor mentioned take a similar action, that will trigger our suppliers, you know, realizing the need that they need to start with that.
Yep.
But I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Yep. Thanks.
So who, who's, who's going to be on this, this committee?
I can chair the commission. I would agree that, that the three business owners in the crowd would be, would be welcome. And I would also welcome one of the healthcare administrators. And then if we could find a, a single practicing doctor, I think we'd have someone from administration in the hospital, someone who's a practicing doctor as well as three business owners. I think that would be suitable.
What about an economic person?
Who would you recommend?
Bocconi?
Oh, Mike Bocconi and Gail Oakes both put their hands up in terms of being a part of the group. Mike offered each of us an email here today, kind of on behalf of dozens and dozens of businesses that he has been in contact with. That's a great recommendation. Fallon, thank you. We'll add them to the list.
I live next door to a medical doctor who is patient zero. I could approach him if there's time to do that.
Okay. Question also is, would this one day be enough time for everyone to meet and get a recommendation?
If a part of that group met, maybe that's best case scenario. We'll have new information from the governor. And we'll have also seen how these other cities have, have voted on their amendments after today. Anything further on that? Or we'll move along to item D.
I think Lynn or Ron should be part of that group.
And I agree with that.
Just going to straighten the side of it.
I agree with that.
Lynn and I will work it out.
Sounds good. Next, we'll move along to section 5304, Planning Grant with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for RideLine. Tom, you've been waiting for an hour and 40 minutes for us to get to your bullet point on our agenda here. Tell us a little bit about that agreement.
Okay, this is a planning grant that was actually put together by two other transit agencies. They included RideLine in it as a, as a way to get RideLine included with the leadership role in this project. Basically, what we're looking at doing is to travel to different sites and/or conferences over the next two years, taking leadership training courses, and then reporting back on the state level to enhance the operations of other transit agencies across the state. We did not originally bring this to the council because we were not the one that originally started this grant. Prairie Hills Transit out of Spearfish is the one that originated the, the grant through the DOT. And it took two years before it actually got approved by DOT. So been a long drawn out process. I had even kind of forgot that we even had this going, so.
Move approval.
Second. I've got a motion from Rux and a second from Johnson for the possible approval and authorization to sign the grant agreement. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the Professional Services Agreement with H.R. Green Incorporated for Plant Improvements to the Soda Ash Silo at the Water Treatment Plant. Possible approval and authorization of City Manager to sign Professional Services Agreement. Bob, you're here to talk to us about that?
Yes, our Soda Ash Silo developed a hole a few years back, and we've been trying to patch it, and it's just time to do a full repair. And while we're at that, we're also going to look at possibly adding some additional capacity to it within the confines of the roof that we have. So we need to have an engineer to be, to be able to make sure all the specs in it won't collapse or anything.
Can I get a motion for that approval and authorization?
Moved.
Second.
A motion from Lunsman and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, allowing the city to choose an engineering firm for the inspection work. Possible approval of the resolution. Robin, you're here.
This is the same process we've done for the last 10 years or so. Park Engineering has done a good job for us in the past, and we recommend appointing them again to do this service for us.
Move to approve.
Second. I've got a motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the Change Order and Payment Request for Aberdeen Public Safety Generator Project. Possible approval of change order four in the amount of $14,877 and payment five in the amount of $19,256 to Quest Construction for their work on the Public Safety Generator Project. Robin, what can you tell us about those payments?
As you can see from the write-up, that the change order amounts to work that was related, the vast majority of this was for conduit that was actually rotting out leading into the building. That was causing part of our problem for the leakage into the building. So that was replaced as part of this. And we did add a fence around it at the chief's request due to the fact that there is some potential for vandalism, and we certainly need that when, when the time comes. So the change order of just under 15,000 brings us to an amount of $19,256 to Quest. We recommend approval.
Is that right?
Olson.
It's Olson. Second.
Got a motion from Olson and a second from Johnson. Carl, give me a vote on that payment.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got Street Maintenance, kind of creep, Wright and Sudlow, $10,984.10. Possible approval of the payment in that amount to Wright and Sudlow. Robin, tell us about that kind of.
This is the typical curb and gutter work that we try to do ahead of our street crew. Their patching and seal putting process, the work will be done from Second Street to State Street this year. And they are just getting started on it, and we recommend approval of the payment to them.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Carl, give me a vote on the payment.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got our approval of the bill list for April 27. It should be listed in the pack that you were provided. Carl, give me a vote on paying the bills.
We need to have a motion.
Motion.
I'll give a motion.
Good call. Take a motion to pay the bill.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Now, Carl, please give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronay?
Epstein.
Bunson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Epstein. Next, we will go to the payroll approval for the pay period, April 12, 2020 through April 25, 2020, for the city sheriff's social security, old age, and survivors insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion?
Moved. Second.
Got a motion, Ronay. Second, Lunsman. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the City Managers Report. Lynn, what have you got for us tonight?
I have no oral report this evening.
Thank you, sir. Next, we've got the call for a special meeting on May 2, 2020 at 2 PM for the possible appointment of a new city manager, obviously following up the interviews that we will be conducting here in the next week or this week. So put on your agendas, May 2, 2020, 2 PM. Do we have anything further before we move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion from Ronay and a second from Rux to adjourn this meeting. Carl, run through the motions.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronay?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone that tuned in on Zoom and the people in the crowd that joined us here today. Thank you very much.